All right, I have seven o'clock. Before we go any further, the first thing I want to do is show everybody my fancy new gavel. The guys at Willshire Trailer made it for me out of motorcycle chain and piston, so I promised them I'd use it at least once. Over five pounds, I will call the meeting to order for the regular common council meeting today is Monday, June twenty first, and could we get a roll call from Clerk Yentor, please?
Jennings.
Here.
Sure.
Here.
Keemer.
Here.
Tarasua.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Slawinski.
Here.
Lee Bonn.
Here.
Leek is excuse, Dalton.
Here.
Fischler.
Here.
Morrow.
Here.
Uh, we do have a quorum, so if you would join me in my, our salute to the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, and this is my first time running a meeting hybrid with this many people, so please forgive me and be patient if I am a little bit slower than normal. Uh, there was a question on Zoom about people attending via Zoom, can they comment, they can, if and when appropriate, and then called upon by the chair. Couple of things I want to touch on, first and foremost, Susan Lemke has been with the city for over twenty-three years, as a matter of fact, it'll be twenty-four years this August, and she is going to be retiring. With her service to the city and the transportation department, I, I think we, it's very safe to say that we would not have the excellent public transportation system we do now without Susan, Susan's guidance, um, and we wish her well in wherever the future may take her. Want to talk a moment about vaccines, I understand that there may still be people out there who haven't uh, been able to get in to get vaccinated. I personally encourage you to get vaccinated, uh, but you have to make your own decisions, but there are lots of opportunities uh, to get vaccinated, so if you are unable to uh, find a location to get a vaccine, uh, contact some of the area hospitals, I know the uh, the uh hometown pharmacy does them, a lot of the pharmacies are doing them, and if you can't find anything online or through your searches, by all means, contact my office and I will put you in touch with people who can. Uh, of course, calling the health department will always get your results as well. The um, Fourth of July parade, want to talk a little bit about that, we have Riverfront Rendezvous, and uh, it's coming up July second, third, and fourth. The lineup is online, it's going to be spectacular, uh, I really feel this is going to be kind of a a community event, everybody getting out to celebrate not only our Independence Day, uh, but the fact that we can actually get out and celebrate in person again, so I'm expecting great things from our Riverfront Rendezvous. When uh, we talked about the Fourth of July parade, most people don't know this, but neither of the two holiday parades um, are put on by the city of Stevens Point, that is, the downtown Point Alliance, and they do a fabulous job with both the Fourth of July parade and the holiday parade during Christmas time. Uh, they voted in February, prior to rules changing or guidance changing, um, that they would not have an in-person parade this year. When the CDC came out with their most recent guidelines, I contacted them, and because there's shortage of staff because of COVID and various other reasons, um, and the timing, they are unable to have the parade this year. So I contacted a friend of mine who I thought might be able to help, Joe Alexander, um, and Joe says, yeah, what's involved? So in conjunction with Joe Alexander, who's handling all of the volunteers, and he's handling all of the uh, float entries, we are still going to be having a holiday parade, a Fourth of July parade at noon on Sunday, July fourth, same route, same rules, um, so bring the family, come on out, if you're interested in volunteering, contact Joe, if you're interested in having a float, you or your business, obviously, as always, tasteful floats, um, and keeping in the spirit of the family event that it is. Contact Joe at Joe, um, let's see, joe@lenddudismotors.com. You can find the Facebook event, or the information is available on the city website. This year, because we don't have staff to pay, we're asking for volunteers, there is no charge to have a float, uh, but pre-registration is required. And we have veterans groups, uh, leading us off, of course, followed by our emergency services, and then the rest of the floats. So it's sure to be a great day, Sunday, the change is that we're not shooting fireworks off from Mead Park like we've done forever, I think. Um, earlier this year, when we started planning, we were trying to find ways to allow for greater social distancing for those who weren't as comfortable in crowds, and working with the fireworks provider, um, they are going to do them on platforms off of the river. So both Mead and Pifner will be available for viewing. Uh, the downside is, there's a a fallout zone, and that map is on our website, we will have the boat parade as always, uh, but then we need to clear a radius around those, uh, they're calling them barges, but they're really just kind of floating platforms. Um, and we want to make sure that all of the boats are outside that radius, so if you normally view the fireworks from a boat, boat, I urge you to contact uh, the Star City website, Stevenspoint.com, or the Parks Director to send you a map, so you can see where uh, that boundary is, to make appropriate plans for what is sure to be the best fireworks show in the tri-state area. All right, maybe I'm exaggerating a little bit. Uh, so look forward to seeing Riverfront Rendezvous. Um, the other thing that I wanted to mention is an idea that came to me from Polly Dalton, um, and that came actually from a friend of yours, and I thought it was pretty appropriate, we were going to do a resolution that council voted on, but I think everybody's going to be on board with this, and because the agenda was already out, we turned it into a proclamation. It's called Seven One Five Day. Stevens Point being the Seven One Five area code, uh, talking about community pride and support for the community, coming up on July fifteenth, which is seven fifteen. So I want to read the proclamation, it says, whereas seven fifteen is the area code of our community, and whereas July fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, seven fifteen, uh, we encourage you to go out of your way to support local businesses in the Seven One Five area code, and whereas Seven One Five Day will be an opportunity for residents and businesses to share community pride, connect with one another, and whereas we ask that you celebrate by sending thank you letters to local businesses, sharing exceptional customer service experiences on social media, have businesses offering celebratory specials, sourcing your supplies for your business from other local businesses, and adding the phrase proud supporter of Stevens Point in the Seven One Five as part of your businesses promotional efforts, or even create a community event. And whereas, as a community, we celebrate the Stevens Point area on Seven One Five Day, and intend to make it an annual celebration, now therefore, I, Mike Weesa, Mayor of the city of Stevens Point, on behalf of the common council of Stevens Point, do hereby proclaim July fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, as Seven One Five Day in the city, and encourage all residents to promote and support their local businesses, so it's a fun idea, I hope you participate in it. Everything's on the table, it's wide open, however you want to celebrate, uh, just know that it's designed to show community pride, support local businesses, and all things within Seven One Five. With that, I am done flapping my lips, so what I will ask is, anyone who wishes to address the mayor or council on specific agenda items other than a public hearing, should register their request at this time, we have no public hearings tonight, um, so if you wish to speak on any of our items, I'm going to ask that you see Sandy right now, or raise your hand, and she'll bring you a slip, and sign up for the agenda item or items you wish to speak on, um, and we will call you when that happens. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
I raised my virtual hand, you may not have seen it, Bob Weir, seven twenty-seven, Second Street, item number, I believe it's nine on the ordinance change regarding ACUs.
Bob?
Correct. Right, uh, ACUs, ADUs.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else, uh, in the audience or online wishing to speak on an agenda item?
Uh, Sarah Bush, Stevens Point Area Convention and Visitor Bureau, on the signage if needed.
Okay. And I think that was under the consent, nope, there it is, nope, consent agenda, right? Yes, I believe that's where it is.
Under finance. Yes, in the consent.
Yep, thank you. Um, we have Michelle Peria on the ADU proposal, I assume that's the zoning change?
Yes, that's correct, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Uh, I have Nancy Robby with her hand up, Nancy?
Also on the zoning change.
Okay. Just making notes here, uh, anyone else? I don't know if there's anyone in the overflow room, but if there is, I need you to come in here and let me know if you wish to speak on an agenda item. Ryan's going to go check. Thank you, Ryan, Director Knaseki. Okay, um, Sandy, can I have those sheets then, please? And then we will move right on to item number four, which is persons who wish to address the mayor and council on a non-agenda item, uh, let's see if we have anybody. You know, this is all on me, I was going to say we should put them in numerical order, like that other person Kelly did. She already did it, Sandy did it, it was in numerical order, so we're all good to go. Um, all right, so we are set, Director, was there anyone in the overflow room? Nobody in the overflow room, that's good to know. Thank you, all right, so, um, we had nobody register for item number four, but I will turn to the turn to the council to see if anyone, Alders, have any items under the non-agenda that they wish to share?
Oh, if I could, just one thing.
Absolutely.
Um, folks who live in District Five and even District Three who walk through the Jefferson School area, I learned today, it's been blocked off by the contractor. Um, I spoke with our Director of Public Works and also spoke with folks over at the school district, and there will soon be access through there on East Street, they apologized, school district sends its apologize to the neighborhood, they just a communication mix-up, so for everybody who's been asking about that or wondering, should be taken care of soon.
Thank you very much, and for those of you that don't have video access, that was Council President Melissa Johnson.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said that.
It's okay, we're good. All right, um, next on our agenda is a presentation by Jenna Flynn and Elizabeth Beck from the Central Wisconsin Tobacco Free Coalition, and as with most technology, it's going to take a second to get everything rolling. Uh, though, without video, are not going to be able to see the slides. Takes a second. There we go. So now we are ready to go, and I will turn it over to Jenna.
All right, thank you, hi, everybody, thanks for having me here tonight, Elizabeth Beck is my counterpart here for moral support. Um, I support the Nicotine Prevention Alliance of Central Wisconsin, it was recently renamed from the Central Wisconsin Tobacco Free Coalition, it's the same mission and vision, um, where our hope is to address nicotine and tobacco prevention issues in the tri-county area, you can go to the next slide. So we support prevention efforts in Wood, Portage, and Marathon counties, um, so you might have seen, we have a new logo, you can go to the next slide. We have coalitions across the state who do this work, so any of the counties in blue and orange are local tobacco-free prevention alliances. Anything in gray, it just isn't a funded county due to uh, lack of funding. Next slide, please. So I'm here tonight to talk about the fact that tobacco is still a problem in Wisconsin, and specifically in this area as well. Um, it's still the number one cause of preventable death and disease, and tonight, we're going to spend some more time talking about tobacco as it relates to e-cigarettes and the current trends in Portage County, and specifically Stevens Point. You're doing good, go ahead.
This one's good?
Yep. Um, so for those who don't know, tobacco is still really expensive for the state of Wisconsin, we have a lot of issues, big issues in Wisconsin, and specifically, um, Stevens Point too, uh, but this is still one of them. You can just click twice, so specifically for Portage County, um, for the youth risk behavior survey that was taken by youth in twenty nineteen, um, the amount of high schoolers that tried these products was overwhelming, it was forty-three percent, and of that forty-three percent, almost half of those high school youth tried to quit. So that tells us that a lot of kids are trying the products, and a lot of kids are trying to quit, the products are highly addictive. Um, so to bring everybody up to speed, when I'm talking about e-cigarettes, there's a fancier term for the products, it's called electronic nicotine delivery systems. If you haven't heard of them, they're also called vapes, vape pens, e-pipes, e-cigarettes, anything and everything you can think of. The products typically contain nicotine along with other chemicals, and the user entails, um, those chemicals along with the nicotine, and uh, that's how the products work, so similar to cigarettes in the sense that they contain nicotine, but the uh, components of the product and what's in the product are different. So for those on the call, you won't be able to see this, but I did bring some products, so um, you guys can actually see what I'm talking about.
Don't use them.
Don't use them, see what I'm talking about, and also smell them, specifically this one is um, very delicious smelling, but I'm just trying to show you that the products are attractive on to young people, they're flavored and they're easily accessible. So if you're comfortable.
It's okay. If anybody doesn't want uh, to handle them, that's completely okay, just give me a high sign and we'll have somebody move them down the line for you.
You can go to the next slide. So we're going to play a little bit of a game, keep these meetings exciting, um, so don't click the next slide yet.
Oh, no, I got, I got a pointer if you want.
So, um, we have this slide here to sh- to show you, to test you, to see what um, products are available um, related to e-cigarettes, so in this slide specifically, there are six e-cigarette-related products. So I'm just going to give you a moment to see, this picture's a little bit trickier to see, but see if you could find six products. So tobacco products right now are designed to mimic other youth items, um, which has been increased their appeal, making them easy to camouflage and conceal. So hopefully you are a rock star at e-cigarettes and you found all six products, you can go to the next slide.
You're not going to tell us?
Okay, so there they are, with the red arrows, um, so there are six products there. The yellow one is a Swarren, that's an e-cigarette, um, there's a jewel down there below the yellow device, there's a cartridge right underneath the hand sanitizer there, and then there's some other miscellaneous um, e-cigarette devices, so hopefully this gives you an idea of uh, what we're up against in the prevention world. You can go to the next slide, so just click three times, Mayor Weesa, please.
Click three times.
To give everybody an idea and bring you up to speed of where we're at in tobacco prevention and control, about eleven years ago is when we addressed smoke-free air in workplaces and restaurants, you might have remembered when that was a thing. That was already eleven years ago, um, this July, actually. In twenty fourteen is when the first local municipality included e-cigarettes in their local ordinance, because right now, the state Wisconsin statute is not written that way, and since then, there's been um, multiple local communities that have addressed that. And in twenty eighteen, you might have recalled before there was a COVID nineteen pandemic, there was an e-cigarette epidemic, um, and it's still an issue. And so in twenty eighteen, the Surgeon General determined that um, there needed to be an advisory on e-cigarettes in the US, next slide, please. So targeting is driving up this use, go ahead. And the flavors are still accessible, you might have heard federally that there was some talk about addressing flavors, um, which did happen, but there are some issues with that, and we can talk about that at a different time if you'd like. So we know that flavors are super attractive to youth, in fact, nine out of ten Wisconsin youth wouldn't try their products if they weren't flavored. And so unfortunately, a tiger doesn't change its stripes, though the products are different and trends are different, the marketing is the same, nicotine is the same, and the point of it is to addict the user. So we still have issues with secondhand smoke, and we still have um, issues with exposure of these products. And, and we know that the um, young people who are more likely to try e-cigarettes at a young age, their likelihood of using cigarettes later on is much higher. And so we know that nicotine is highly addictive, so when we're talking about these products, they are the most commonly used product among youth, so we're really concerned about a whole new generation becoming addicted to nicotine. And these um, chemicals in the products are harmful, and it's recommended that they are not used um, in indoor spaces, specifically by this American Society of Heating, Refrigerating, and Air Conditioning Engineers. Um, e-cigarette aerosols contain harmful chemicals, and they undermine um, clean indoor air. So this is just a list of some of the chemicals that are found in the products. And there are known carcinogens in the products. And so, earlier this year, you can go to the next slide, we worked with the Nicotine Prevention Alliance of Central Wisconsin, worked with the Portage County um, AOD Coalition, to submit a public opinion survey to hear what your constituents have to say and think about this topic. So we sent the survey out, I believe, this past winter, we had about sixty respondents, and the respondents were overwhelmingly um, disapproving of the use of e-cigarettes in clean indoor spaces. So specifically ninety-three percent of those sixty respondents. And then moving on, related to outdoor spaces like parks, for example, um, the response was similar in that seventy-eight percent disapprove of tobacco product use in outdoor spaces. So with that being said, there are communities across the state that have already addressed this issue. Um, all the little dots in that map that you see are local villages, cities, and municipalities that have addressed e-cigarettes in their clean indoor ordinance, and anything in green that you see, um, is a community that has addressed smoke-free outdoor spaces, like parks. So about forty percent of Wisconsinites have already been able to enjoy their um, updated clean indoor air. I think we got it under ten minutes, so with that being said, um, this is something that um, we're here for educational purposes, we're here to answer any questions. The Tobacco Prevention and Control Program through the Department of Health Services works with the Public Health Law Center to get best practice language and information on this topic, so um, local communities can make informed decisions to um, keep everybody healthy.
Thank you, Jenna, I appreciate it, and for those who are listening but may not have video access, can you give a contact information if someone wants more information or they have questions, an email and phone number perhaps?
Yes, so my email is jenna dot flynn at co dot marathon dot w i dot u s, and phone number seven one five two six one one nine three one. And anyone just interested in getting involved or getting updates about what our alliance is working on can visit the Central Wisconsin Tobacco Free Coalition website. We haven't updated that yet with our branding, so.
Great. Thank you very much, and thank you both for your time this evening.
Thank you.
If anybody has questions or uh, wants more information, please contact uh, Jenna or Elizabeth at the Nicotine Prevention Alliance of Central Wisconsin. And we are back. There we go. Okay, um, onto our consent agenda, uh, which is item number six, is there a motion?
Sorry, Tarasua, I'd move to approve.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by President Johnson, discussion. Uh, number six, Michael Omira, step forward to the lectern, please, uh.
Didn't ask if anyone wanted to pull anything from the consent.
I am assuming that Mr. Omira knows that, and he wanted to speak about something first?
Yes.
And then, then we'll see if anybody wants to pull anything after that. And Dave?
Good evening, my name is Michael Omira.
Hang on one second, Dave Medine, you register as a possibly, because I know you had something you wanted to talk about, and we'll do that, and then we'll see if the Alders uh, want to pull anything for further discussion. Sorry, Mr. Omira.
Good evening, my name is Michael Omira, I reside at eighteen oh nine Clark Street, Stevens Point, Wisconsin. I, I am speaking uh, in regard to the uh, Plan Commission Consent Agenda, uh, specifically their recommendation for the ordinance. And uh, I will speak at this time in a general sense. I am afraid that the enforcement of the section of fourteen G of the uh, proposed uh, amendment, uh, is, would be very hard to enforce and would leave subsequent city councils in a bad way. That's the one that says that you have to have a resident living in the principal or the uh, ancillary structure uh, in order for approval, and they're going to have, you sign something for it. Well, what happens when I go and I get an ancillary structure on my house? And uh, in twenty-five years, I die. My property goes into probate. Mike, I will die sometime.
No, 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 I, I'm sorry, Mike, and I don't mean to interrupt you, so I'm going to let you complete your, your thoughts.
The property goes into probate, and the heirs don't live in Stevens Point, which would happen if I die. The property could be very hard to sell for what's in it, because you have to find somebody that wants to have a ancillary apartment and can afford it. Uh, this leaves the future council with a mess. Do they, they'll, they come and they'd ask for some sort of variance or uh, special relief, and what are you going to do, are you going to grant a variance and we could have the property, uh, perhaps become all rental? Are you going to deny the request and recreate a hardship for my heirs? Or are you going to order the building raised or converted back to a permitted use in the zone? And that would be a terrible position for a future council to be in, because those, those are hard decisions, and I don't think that it's a wild uh, uh, speculation to say that it won't happen. And uh, zoning is different than a lot of the ordinance uh, we deal with in city government, because it has such a long-term focus. And I think it's important that you think of what's going to happen down the road, uh, either by uh, having a zone or lifting a zone, or setting uh, ordinances, and I, uh, that's why uh, I would hope that you would consider that when you uh, look at the amendment.
Thank you, Michael, and I, I hope you remember that honestly, your comments were more appropriate under item number nine rather than the consent agenda, even though it was discussed at Plan Commission and potentially some other committees, uh, it's most appropriate to, uh, the actual action item. Mr. Medine, I would afford you the same opportunity, uh, but if it's something you're going to talk about on item number nine in this regard, okay, thank you.
I'm Dave Medine, I was the Community Development Director from seventy-six to eighty-four. Commonly, and I don't know if it's the same now as it was, but when, when you approve the minutes of a committee, you generally approve the discussion, the action, the, the general content of the discussion, and, and really approve what people said at the meeting. Now, if, in, in this particular instance, I, I, I think you should come with a fresh approach and, 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 and take that into consideration, but not approve the minutes in the normal context that I'm used to, um, where the, where you're approving the discussion and the action that's been took, I just had a question on that, that am I, am I reading too much into the way it used to be, or not?
Um, well, I guess I'm not a hundred percent sure, when we approve the minutes and actions, we approve the minutes and actions. Um, if you are referring to a recommendation from the Plan Commission to approve the zoning ordinance, that, that is accurate, that is exactly what happened, and that's what we're approving. By approving the minutes and actions of the Plan Commission, you're not approving the ordinance. You are approving the fact that the Plan Commission recommended to the council approval of the ordinance. In some cases, there are action items and those are generally listed in our consent agenda. Uh but if we think something is significant enough or there are rules like resolutions, ordinance changes, those always require a separate action item to be considered by the council. So if committee approves something, that doesn't necessarily mean that the council approves something. That's what we're doing tonight.
I just yeah, I just wanted to make sure that.
We're not gonna try and pull a gotcha.
When you're approving the minutes, you're not necessarily approving the language that may have been proposed by by Plan Commission members, only the recommendation.
Um well, I I think it's yes on both accounts. We are affirming, uh let's say if if I wanted chickens. I don't know where that came from. Uh but if we wanted to create a chicken ordinance in the city and Mike made a motion at committee to only allow um red chickens. The council still has the authority to overturn that or accept that. All committees, with the exception of a very few, uh are advisory to council. Very similar to how it is on county board. Uh so nothing is approved until council approves that. Does that make sense? So i- if if some action was taken at the Plan Commission to change words, um that proposal is before you. Whatever whatever passed any committee is before the council. The council still has the authority to make any changes, amendments, modifications, approval or denial. Does that make sense?
Okay, just I don't want to deliberate, but on the county level, the committees approve their own minutes. The county board does not approve it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so there's a little bit of a distinction that that's different. You actually approve the the action of the discussion because you're approving the minutes.
Yes.
So it's a little bit different. I just want to make that distinction.
And the reason that this happens this way is because every standing committee is made up only of council members currently. So everyone that's voting on this, the committee was there. Um does that make sense? Because county has citizen memberships on a lot of their committees. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. If someone wished to pull something from that, we would need an amendment to pull. Um and we can pull that to talk about it further. The motion is to approve the consent agenda. Is there something you wish to pull?
Yes, mayoral appointments to the Board of Public Works.
Mayoral appointments to the Board of Public Works.
And the Housing Authority.
Uh mayoral appointments to the Housing Authority. The Board of Public Works. You're okay with affirmative action, fair housing?
Yes.
Okay, so we will pull those items for further discussion after consideration of the consent agenda. Is there anything else that someone wishes to discuss further? I don't see anything. So with that, I will have the clerk call the roll.
Jennings.
Hi.
Shore.
Hi.
Keemer.
Hi.
Zarazua.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Slawinski.
Hi.
Niebone.
Hi.
Excuse Dalton.
Hi.
Fishler.
Hi.
Morrow.
Hi.
Okay, um that is approved. We now have mayoral appointments for the Board of Public Works and the Housing Authority. Need a motion? Uh motion to.
Oh, to allow the discussion, is that what you're asking?
We need a motion to either approve or disapprove.
No, I thought you were asking for motion for discussion.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
One second.
Seconded by Dalton. Now, discussion. Alder Jennings?
Yes, I just uh I want the public and council to be mindful that mayoral appointments to committees, commissions and boards are very much a political act, just as they are for the county, the state governor and the United States president. Um I see little in the resume of the applicant for Public Works that qualifies him for that particular board. Um in the resume, he served a long time on Transportation Commission, which has almost nothing to do with kind of decision-making taken up by the Board of Public Works. The Transportation Commission focuses on buses. Streets and roads are the neurology of our city and the most important and expensive capital asset we have. Replacing Corey Lattick, the person who probably knows more than anyone about the economic impacts of our street infrastructure and our overall economy and quality of life, how that impacts that, should be replaced by someone who brings a background and knowledge to the table, able to navigate controversial decisions about roadways that are coming forward. In terms of the applicant for the Housing Authority, certainly well-qualified. However, my understanding is uh James Evans applied for the Housing Authority. He is a long-term resident of the high-rise and has for years been assisting people at the high-rise in innumerable ways. As a person of color, he brings a unique perspective to the Housing Authority and can speak from experiential knowledge about high-rise issues and um similar issues that affect other facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none. The motion is to approve. Um clerk, would you please call the roll?
Morrow.
Hi.
Fishler.
Hi.
Dalton.
Hi.
Please excuse Niebone.
Hi.
Slawinski.
Hi.
Johnson.
No.
Zarazua.
Uh.
Keemer.
Hi.
Shore.
Hi.
Jennings.
No.
Okay, unanimous consent. That is proved. Item number seven. I'm sorry, I didn't say even I meant did not mean I meant majority consent.
Yes.
Louis, I'm gonna mute you. Uh let's see. Item number seven is a resolution. That is a request from Melissa Wasaki representing Stevens Point Brewery for a conditional use permit to construct an outdoor beer sampling area at twenty-six seventeen Water Street with the parcel identified in your agenda consistent with chapter twenty-three point zero-two sub-two, sub-D, sub-three, sub-L, I believe. Director Knaski.
Uh this was a uh request from Stevens Point Brewery for the outdoor beer sampling area. Uh was at Plan Commission earlier this month. There was a recommendation to approve. Uh as presented, there was one additional condition which is included as part of the resolution uh that outlines additional screening requirements. We're currently working with the applicant to address those concerns. Would recommend approval as presented.
Thank you, sir. Motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Do a second. Seconded by Morrow. Discussion. Comments from the audience? Seeing none. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Jennings.
Hi.
Shore.
Hi.
Keemer.
Hi.
Zarazua.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Slawinski.
Hi.
Hi.
Please excuse Dalton.
Hi.
Fishler.
Hi.
Morrow.
Hi.
And that is proved. Item number eight is a resolution, uh request from Jim Anderson for a final subdivision plat review for a proposed thirty-nine lot subdivision located at fifty-four ninety-eight Guller Road with the parcels identified in your packet in the Town of Hall, Director Knaski.
Before each side is the final subdivision plat for a thirty-nine lot subdivision located on Guller Road currently in the Town of Hall. We are currently working through the annexation process through the Department of Administration. There was additional communication from the Town of Hall and Mr. Anderson's legal counsel regarding a uh easement concern uh that the town had and the uh drainage district in that general area. Staff believes the concerns that the town and the drainage district brought up uh are addressed through, I believe, a nineteen thirty-nine easement agreement that already exists. Uh that will stay within the the property, although it's being subdivided, the easements don't just disappear because someone else purchases the property. Uh the recommendation from Plan Commission is to approve with two additional conditions. Uh one that there's successful annexation and the other that there are municipal utilities run to the property. Staff recommends approval as presented.
Thank you. Motion?
Alder. Alder Slawinski, whoop, sorry.
Go ahead, Alder Slawinski.
Deliberately.
Uh yeah, I would like to uh move approval of the resolution requesting uh the request from Jim Anderson for a final subdivision plat review for a proposed thirty-nine lot subdivision located at fifty-four ninety-eight Guller Road in the Town of Hall.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second? Seconded by Morrow. Discussion. Alder Jennings and then Alder Morrow.
It was noted that you intentionally ignored my hand.
All right, we're gonna go to our speaker list before we go to the council. I have Trevor Rourke wishing to speak.
It was good to speak in person again.
Good to see you in person.
Yeah, right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh Trevor Rourke, six zero one Washington Avenue. Uh provided testimony on this item before at Plan Commission. And I watched the meeting recordings and read the description and financial calculations for the subdivision plat. I've also talked with Director Knaski about uh some concerns briefly. Even with a number of concerns addressed at Plan Commission and by staff, it's still not a good idea to move forward with the subdivision. The Town of Hall has explicitly requested that this plat get postponed due to some real concerns. Shouldn't the city collaborate with the Town of Hall over this land and how it's developed? Regarding the calculation shown by staff with infrastructure costs versus property tax revenue for the subdivision, this looks misplaced. Staff projected that the serviceable life of the street will last ninety years. According to the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, Chapter fourteen, Section ten of the FDM, the serviceable life of a paved street is twenty years. According to Matt Barr of Ayers, a professional engineer, it's eighteen years. According to Black Diamond Paving and Concrete is twenty-five to thirty-five years. According to Alpha Paving Industries, the average life is twenty-five years. And I could keep looking. So why is there this huge difference between the projection ninety, excuse me, the projected ninety years and the industry standards of about twenty to thirty-five years? A lifespan that all of us can look up online. My sense is that the longevity staff is presenting is the ninety-year replacement rate and not the actual serviceable life of the street. In other words, the city's capital budget can afford to replace a street after ninety years, which I think it's actually a little bit higher right now. This has to be clarified before moving forward, as the ramifications for infrastructure miscalculations are very large. If this gets postponed, I'd recommend staff clarify the longevity of street serviceable life, not the longevity at which your city can afford to reconstruct the street. There's a huge difference, roughly fifty or more years. And thus, the difference in costs are so large, it might render this project fiscally irresponsible for the city. Lastly, if the city were to follow the recommendations and values of the Green Tier Legacy, pathway to sustainable Stevens Point, Vision Zero, safe routes to schools, efforts to mitigate climate change and our difficult work as a city to diversify and include more people for and through affordable housing, this project would not even be considered. I hope you decide to postpone the subdivision plat, recollect- recalculate the costs and collaborate more with the Town of Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rourke. And Keith Pilger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh Alder Persons, uh Keith Pilger, seven thirty-three Ridge Road, also the Anderson O'Brien Law Firm, representing uh Jim Anderson, speaking in favor of the proposed uh approval of the subdivision plat. I hope you had the chance to receive and review my letter earlier today uh responding to concerns raised by the Town of Hall over a drainage uh easement question. Um in the event you didn't, just to quickly summarize, the easements are already in place. They've been in place for several decades. Uh they've done their job. The easement holders have the ability to drain surface water into those ditches as they have for many, many years. They have the rights per the term of those easements to maintain those ditches. This proposed development and the approval of this plat does not change any of those facts. They'll continue to have those rights. The owners of the lots that are subject to these easements in that ditch will have the burden of that easement. Nothing will change. Uh therefore, we request that the city uh follow the Plan Commission's recommendation and the council, I should say, and approve the plat uh that's proposed tonight.
Thank you very much, sir. Now, Alder Jennings, I apologize. I overlooked the fact that we had two speakers uh registered to speak. Your comments relating to the agenda item are now appropriate.
Thank you. There are two aspects of this agenda item that I object to. First is the fact that the Town of Hall Chair made a formal request to the city in April that the final approval of the Jim Anderson plat not take place until after the city and Town of Hall meet to discuss a boundary agreement. That meeting has now been scheduled for next week. The mayor, Plan Commission and this council haven't till now chosen to ignore a reasonable request by neighboring municipality, one offered in the spirit of cooperation. There is no reason a decision decision needs to be made on this plat at this meeting unless one takes into account the political motivations and calculus to push this item through in advance of the talks with Hull. Second, this development will not pay for itself and it will make the city poorer. It's a textbook development proposal right out of strong towns. Next month, this proposal is coming back to Finance Committee where staff will ask council how it intends to pay for the infrastructure leading to the development. There are two paths here. The the developer pays for it, then passes off the infrastructure to the city, which becomes responsible for future maintenance and replacement costs along with other services. Or a special assessment is applied to those living on Bolowski Road. In this case, the city pays the upfront costs, hoping that down the road, residents will agree to pay the special assessment if they hook up to city utilities. Since the city will annex property for this in future develop- developments, I imagine there will be considerable reluctance on the part of residents and Hull. Just last week, you listened to Comptroller Treasurer Lattick explain that we quote, "need more infrastructure investment," unquote, because we are not close to paying for what we have now. In terms of road replacement, we are only at eighty-three percent of our target. In terms of resurfacing, we are only at forty-nine percent of our target. This development adds to that problem. It does not resolve it. A one-month postponement to at least address the concerns of Hull and act in a collaborative way is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Morrow, I think you were next.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is a great option for us. Um us here in Point, we have very few limited options for people who want to build a single who wants to want to build a single-family home. We have us, I mean, we have a lot of options here, but building a single-family home is not really is not really one of them. Um Alder Jennings did end up bringing up the cost of the infrastructure for it. I know in my own block as well, um the city has learned that they need to make a better evaluation when they sign off or when they actually buy into it, because I know in my own subdivision, some some of the infrastructure was not up to really good par, so they're still having issues. Um and I've talked to Joel about that as well. But the whole the whole point is um this is something that I think that seems that our city needs. Um because if not, folks are gonna keep going over to Plover as they have houses going up and we're losing more and more folks who folks who want to have a single family home. Some people some people want to rehab and infill and that's great. But we need to have a whole spectrum of options for everybody. If we don't have that, we're gonna we're we're gonna lose single-family homes. We're gonna lose people moving here. Because everybody wants a single, I mean, not everybody wants a single family home, but people do want those things. If we don't have that as an option, then we're gonna then we're gonna continue to we're gonna continue to lose out. Um for us to be able to add sewer and water and so on, I mean, that is something that will be built, I believe, should be built into the cost of those homes, because you are right. If if folks want to wait until they've they've already bought their homes, that's a lot of money that that people are not are not gonna are not gonna really want. But if it's built into their home and if it's built in and if it's built into every single lot, that spreads the cost out to everybody. And when they end up buying those homes, most of them are not gonna even see that cost, because each of the lots are gonna cost the same amount of money. So when everybody starts, they're gonna have the same, they're they're going to all have the same things. And if you wait until somebody wants to finally buy in, that could cause its own problems. So um I think this is a great addition to the to the stock that we have. And I think that I think the town's gonna be very, and I think I think the town's gonna very much like the added in the added homes.
Thank you very much. President Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh and thank you to the folks who spoke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the folks who've spoken. I, I wonder if, so I'm, I'm not opposed necessarily to, to this plat. I'm just wondering if cart and horse is kind of coming into play here. Number one, of course, the meeting with Hall. Which I, I'm very glad that we're having a boundary meeting. That's, that's, that's a great thing. We should have been working on that for a long time. But the fact that this is gonna come to finance on sort of the discussion on infrastructure payment. It seems like those discussions should be tied together, because otherwise we're approving the plat and then we're going, how do we pay for it? So, I would be inclined to see this postponed for a month so that we can have that Finance Committee discussion.
Thank you. And I need to point out some, some facts, because it sounds like the city of Stevens Point, the town of Hall, hasn't had boundary discussions. We have for many years. We've talked with Chairman Holdridge. Current Chairman Wills was involved in those discussions. We have had the start of those discussions many times already. I just don't want to give people the impression that it hasn't ever happened, because it has.
Thank you. I guess what I meant to say is moving towards a boundary.
Try it again. Yes.
Yeah. I didn't complete the thought. Thank you for the clarification.
Thanks. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Alder Dalton.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to echo that I would agree with President Johnson on perhaps coupling these items together in July. And I think there's no particular urgency for approving this plat that I think having that meeting and a good sign of diplomacy to wait until after that. So I guess, would it be appropriate to encourage the motioners to rescind so we can make a alternative motion to table?
You cannot rescind. Robert's rules does not allow that. And as we all know, we're following Robert's rules now. Aldous Lewinsky, you said in the comment section that you wish to speak. You have the floor, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you. I guess I just have a few things. I want to echo what Alder Morrow had stated regarding his support for this. Regarding the, the concerns from the town of Hall of the easements, again, I just want to echo the testimony from the representative of the developer. That we cannot just go in there and start tweaking these easements. I mean, these easements are, they're signed and agreed upon, and they've been there for years and and, and I guess just to kind of piggyback off of that, I would assume that this design of this subdivision has been gone through by by the DNR. And they've, you know, they've, they've scrutinized this and assured that there's, you know, proper drainage and they're not affecting wetlands or whatever it may be. So I mean, it's not like they just started putting rectangles on a piece of paper and punched a couple roads in. I mean, I, I would, and again, I don't see any of those documents, but you know, this has been well thought out and designed. And then when it comes regarding the, the financial part of it, and I know this isn't probably maybe something we should be talking about, but I would definitely be encouraging my fellow Alders that this, the, the payment of this development is, you know, put on by the developer. And then they pass it on to their, you know, the potential buyers of these lots. So I guess those, those are my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. For an additional two cents, we will now turn the floor over to Alder Person Mary Niebo.
Thank you very much. I, I, I tend to think that everybody's entitled to my opinion. I have been supportive of this at at every stage, I think, except the Plan Commission this month because I was out of town. But I, I am gonna side with Alder Jennings and Alder President Johnson. I think it won't hurt to wait a month. I, I, I like the, the, the property will develop ultimately. Whether it's the Hall that develops it or the city, wherever, whoever ends up with it, it will be developed in time. If the city puts in utilities, we have a better opportunity to protect the creek that's in on the north side, I believe. But I think because of the questions that have been raised about infrastructure costs and the fact that we'll be discussing that next month, I think it's very appropriate to wait a month. And again, I support the project. But I, I think I would, I will probably vote no tonight in order to try to bring it back next month. But so that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Aldus Arizona.
So, two questions. I guess saying, so if we vote no, can this still come back despite our?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure. And then do we have someone like Director Kornowski or someone who can speak to?
He is on deck.
If there are any consequences to postponing.
He is on deck. Any other Alders wishing to speak? Okay, I just want to make one other comment, because I've heard it three times now again, waiting a month. We are not gonna have a boundary agreement in a month.
I know.
Okay. So I want to be clear on that, so nobody expects the town of Hall and the city of Stevens Point to have a bona fide agreement in a month. A second time Alder Morrow.
Thank you, thank you very much. I mean, the thing with the, with the, with Hall, that, that has been going on for decades when Alder Omara was here and others. And it always seems to flare up whenever something like this happens, then nothing ever seems to happen.
Thank you. Now, Director Kornowski, there have been some things that have been, oh, I'm sorry, Alder Fishler.
I just had a quick question.
Yes.
Happens if we move forward and there is no boundary agreement?
Then we are no different than we are today. Does that make sense? I mean, without a boundary agreement, things are just the way they are. Boundary agreement would have formal, agreed upon adjustments. The last boundary agreement I think we had was with the Village of Plover in regards to an annexation that happened twelve, fifteen years ago, something like that. Now, Director Kornowski.
Thank you.
Some things that were said. Let's give input, and I know Director Badun is not here to talk about road life, but we're just gonna have to take his previous statements as his testimony tonight.
Unfortunately for Director Badun, he is in the next room, so.
Is he?
He is indeed.
But nobody was in there. You told me nobody was in there.
Well, the directors are.
Director Badun, could you come in this room, please?
Nobody means nobody, right? So, as, as it relates to the discussion of the boundary agreement, I, I don't believe that I gotta rethink, capture my thoughts here. As it relates to the boundary agreement, through my conversations with Chairperson Wills, I've met with him twice in person, and both conversations have been really productive. I don't believe that pushing forward with this subdivision tonight derails the boundary agreement discussion at all. In fact, I think that this is the catalyst for pushing us to have these discussions. If you were to approve the agreement tonight, or I'm sorry, the, the subdivision tonight with the two conditions, there's still an opportunity for the council to say no through the annexation. Or through, as Alder Jennings mentioned earlier, saying, no, we will not put deferred special assessments on those properties along Brolowski Road. Those, there are still a few additional steps that we still have to take as a municipality, the developers to take to, to run those utilities. I think there is a timeline here, and I can't speak for the developer, his council, but there are deadlines in purchase agreements, among other things. We do have some Department of Administration deadlines that we have to meet as part of the annexation. We're working through those right now. We're still in the twenty-day waiting period for DOA to issue a public interest letter. And based on that, that's really going to drive the annexation discussion. So those were my, my, my quick few comments as it relates to the boundary agreement. It's still moving forward. We're still really hopeful. This development has really been the catalyst for that discussion to occur again. And as we move forward, that area and the area south of the old Walmart, the Dunham's sports area is also kind of the two main focuses of the town of Hall and the city of Stevens Point for future outward growth if there were to occur.
Thank you, Director. Director Badun, you are not nobody, buddy. You are somebody. Could you speak? There were some comments about the fact that every single one of your roads in the city is past its useful life.
I certainly can.
Almost.
Almost, yes.
Twenty years.
Most of them, yes. And, and I think really the difference is exactly what we're talking about. When Mr. Rourke spoke, you speaking, you used the word roads, I think, that he actually meant were pavements. Pavements don't have a life of a road. A road is everything from the native ground up to the surface. And those have a much longer life. And what we had given numbers to Director Kornowski when he was putting things together included the preservative and, and, and resurfacing costs, so that for the lifecycle costing is what we had provided them. But the road itself will last for ninety years. That's when we'll dig it up and put in new utilities, because that's roughly what we try to balance those out to. So, we build the road, design it to last that long. Now, the pavement will have to be touched up in that time, you know, two to three times. You know, between, in that, that cycle. But those are numbers we'd already given to Director Kornowski to figure out whether or not this would, would work or not, so.
Thank you very much, Director Badun. Comptroller, I know there was some talk about whether or not the development pays for that infrastructure. I know you've also talked about it before. If you don't want to comment, I completely understand, but for the benefit of those that hadn't been in previous meetings, it might not be a bad idea.
All right. So in terms of whether the development pays for the infrastructure, what I would say is, you know, I believe that i- if you look at just the infrastructure, you don't look at any of the other costs of providing services, then I believe that it does. Where it gets a little bit more complicated is infrastructure isn't the only service that we provide as a city. So that's, that's where it gets a little bit more complicated if you're gonna say, you know, does the development cover the full cost of all the services? What I can tell you is when I've looked at subdivisions before, and I looked at this for whitetail subdivisions, or for the whitetail subdivision, and what I found with that one is that basically it more or less broke even, where it wasn't the most profitable development that we've ever done as far as a subdivision. But also that it seemed to be about in line with the average for the city in terms of the proportion of revenue that goes to cover the infrastructure.
Thank you, Comptroller Treasurer. I appreciate that. Motion before you is to approve. If you are in favor, vote yes. If you are opposed, vote no, and the clerk will call a roll.
Morrow.
Yes.
Fishler.
I.
Fulton.
No.
Niebo.
No.
Lewinsky.
Hi.
Johnson.
No.
Sarah Zua.
Hi.
Keemer.
No.
Shore.
Hi.
Jennings.
No.
It's a five-five vote. In the event of a tie, the mayor can vote, only in the event of a tie, and I will vote aye. By majority consent, the motion is approved. Item number nine is an ordinance amendment, a request from the city of Stevens Point to amend chapter twenty-three, the zoning ordinance of the revised municipal code of the city of Stevens Point. Said request adds section twenty-three point zero one sub fourteen relating to the allowance of accessory dwelling and commercial units in the city of Stevens Point. We have an extensive list of speakers on this item, but at the onset, I would entertain a motion. Thank you. Do we have a second? Seconded by Dalton. Now, we're gonna go through our speaker list, and I'm gonna start online, just to try and keep everybody in in orders here. So I will go to Michelle Korea. I, I apologize if I'm mutilating your name. Michelle.
Hi, can you hear me, Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you.
You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Just a couple of comments. I, I just came to be aware of this proposal from a, a yard sign in a neighbor's yard and began talking to other neighbors about this proposal. And, you know, just as anecdotal evidence, kind of quickly discovered that no one had heard about it. When I contacted my Alder, I was told that this is something that the council had been working on for the past eighteen months. So, you know, this coincides, at least this is the information I have. This, you know, it, so it seems to me that there's been a lot of momentum during the pandemic during COVID. You know, so I, I think that that may have something to do with, you know, a lack of awareness, perhaps, you know. I, I, I guess some things that I discussed with my Alder Person last week were things like a twenty-foot allowable height, you know, for the construction, concerns about you know, the accessory dwelling units, perhaps, you know, being part of an Airbnb or Verbo. You know, kind of hotel, kind of rental, you know, business for a property owner, whether the property owner would live on site. You know, if, if there would be anybody who, you know, was actually on site that, that owned the property, the primary dwelling. I'm just kind of listing concerns, you know, so it, it I guess I'm kind of curious about whether this is a public kind of push for this proposal, or if this is part of a smart growth agenda that's kind of more of a top-down initiative. You know, I, I have, I wonder if there was a survey that was sent out to citizens of Stevens Point, you know, asking them, or if there was just a lot of requests coming in for ADUs. And so the city was overwhelmed by requests and decided to kind of put this, you know, put this, you know, this ordinance through this way. So that's that's really kind of all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I will have the director recap the, the work on this, and it's probably a good time to do it now, even though we've started talking about it already, just in case some of the other people who wish to speak may have just heard about it or seen it. Can you give us an idea? I don't know if it's actually been eighteen months, but it's been a while. Director.
Yeah, so we had through some discussions with Alders in the early parts of twenty twenty. Had looked at the possibility of including accessory dwelling units as part of the city's zoning code. And in March of twenty twenty, which seems like a lifetime and a half ago, in this very room, the last in-person meeting we had, staff presented just some really conceptual ideas as it relates to whether or not we could or how the ordinance would look for accessory dwelling units. COVID hit, and Kyle Kearns, who was kind of the driving factor behind the zoning amendment, left. We brought Adam Kuhn on a few months later, and then through additional discussion with Alders, it was asked us where we were at in that process. So we had put together the next proposal in February and March. Brought it through the Plan Commission for initial review. That was discussion only, twice, I believe, in April and May. And then once we were more comfortable with the language, or the commission was more comfortable with the language, we did publish the public hearing. And take it through the Plan Commission process. Are there ways that we could have notified the public better? Yes, I, I can't argue with that fact. How do we go about doing that besides sending letters to the five thousand or so parcels that are zoned residential in the city? I, I guess I'm, I'm open to suggestions moving forward. So we did have the public hearing. There was a recommendation by the Plan Commission for approval. And that's what's before you here tonight. I, I think there's a lot of moving parts within the, the proposed zoning code amendment. And as staff had written it, we put a fair number of safeguards to provide additional opportunities to existing property owners to add an accessory dwelling unit or add existing, or I'm sorry, add a accessory commercially in it to their parcel. While also ensuring that the neighbors were being protected from having a giant shed next to them that would have a house in it. If you look within the memo that I sent out late this afternoon, I'm sorry, didn't bring copies for the public, but more than happy to provide that to those who requested, I laid out two very specific scenarios that would both work. One was on a five thousand square foot lot, which would be the minimum size required to have an accessory dwelling unit. Also, one that was a little bigger at sixty-five hundred square feet. Those, both those scenarios are actual parcels within the city of Stevens Point where it would work. There are safeguards that we have within the, the proposal that, that again, protect the surrounding property owner's interests that protect and provide additional flexibility to property owners to develop additional affordable housing, develop a mother-in-law suite as an example, or develop a tourist during house. And so staff's very supportive of the change, more than happy to answer any questions. I think there's been some misinformation in the public and how this, this ordinance amendment would function. Not everyone will be Not everyone will be building a two-story garage with an ADU or ACU above it. Some folks will have a small cottage for their mother-in-law or father-in-law or parents as part of the aging in place. It's a possibility that at some point, maybe they sell their home, sorry, not sell their home, but their kids move into the main structure and they want to age in the same property that they have owned for thirty years and they move into this smaller cottage on site. So it's unique. It's a different thing. We don't have, there's a few municipalities within the state that have ADUs. I wrote one for Door County when I was the planner over in Door County, and it's worked exceptionally well. We use that kind of as the base for this. So enough of my ranting. I'm more than happy to answer any questions that folks might have. Otherwise, staff is supportive of the proposed amendment as presented.
Thank you, Director, and stand by, just in case any of the other speakers have questions. We'll have you answer those questions after the speaker's list is exhausted. Next up, we have Bob Ware online. Bob?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I've had a little problem with my internet. But anyway, it is Bob Ware, seven twenty-seven Second Street. I've gone through this ordinance proposal, and there are quite a few items that I feel are inaccurate, number one, or detrimental to the community. If you look at definitions as an example for ACUs and I'll just read verbatim. Accessory commercial units, plural, is a small detached commercial unit that are accessory to, and you know, we have a problem with noun verb agreement there. There are several other places in here that are grammatically incorrect, but let me get to the substance of it. Creating these ACUs and ADUs would be effectively downzoning every residential district in the City of Stevens Point. Because it applies to, and it's permitted use. Keep in mind, it's not conditional use, permitted use. As an example, a R-one, R-two are single-family zoned. But if you put an ADU in there, now you have a two-family parcel. R-three is two-family zoned. You put an ADU in there, you got a three-family. So it's a case of basically wanting to downzone all the residential properties or all the residentially zoned properties by adding one more family or one more family unit to each of those lots. Setbacks. Excuse me. What about the traditional neighborhood overlay district, which incorporates a large portion of the residential properties in the city? If it's a permitted use, that means that a person could put up, no, number one, they could, using the traditional neighborhood overlay district, reduce setbacks, which you, a couple of months ago, created, took out of conditional use and made it a permitted use. What would, there would be nothing to stop somebody from putting up an ADU or an ACU within four feet of a property lot. So you have a property that maybe has the ten-foot setbacks, side yard setbacks, and all of a sudden you're putting in an auxiliary or accessory building using the traditional neighborhood overlay district setbacks.
Thank you, Bob. We want to be respectful of everybody's time. We do have an extensive speaker list. Your three minutes has exhausted. Please wrap it up with parting comments.
Okay, parting comments. It's a bad idea. You're going to create a problem with storm runoff because you're reducing the permeable ground. There are numerous problems with this ordinance. And the public obviously has not been aware of the process that's been going on and may have been caused by COVID or whatever. But
Great. Thank you, Mr. Ware. Thank you, sir. Next up online, we have Nancy Rappi.
Nancy Rappi, nine twenty-five Smith Street. I am also opposed to this ADU/ACU. In the first district, we already have a significant transient population of student rental homes. The last thing we need is to have a bunch of backyard shacks that are turned into tourist rooming houses. We definitely don't need that. And even if you were doing this for grandma so that she can age in place, does it have to have a sidewalk that goes from the backyard to the front yard? What if grandma's home alone in her little shack and she has a medical emergency? And the primary property owner is not home in the middle of the winter? Does that mean that the paramedics have to trudge through three feet of snow to get to grandma's shack in the backyard? Another thing that I'm very opposed to is, and it's actually a joke, that you are having them have a garage space or some sort of parking space when just a couple of months ago, you made it possible for people to park overnight twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five by getting a free permit? So why on earth would you expect ADU or ACU builders to now provide parking spaces that you previously said was such a hardship and so discriminatory against these poor people who had too many vehicles and no place to put them? It's just idiotic. And anybody who thinks that you're going to allow this and it's going to go smoothly and there aren't going to be problems, is there going to be an addressing convention for those ADUs? Or are they going to fall under the same address as the primary residence? Are you going to have separate garbage and recycling bins for the ADU? Or is that new person that's living there now going to need to use the same bins that were assigned to the original homeowner? This is a terrible proposal. I'm totally against it. I don't want to see it go through. You have no idea how, and that's another thing that really ticks me off. All of these alders, who, it's not going to impact their district, but boy, are they on the bandwagon to do this in the first district. The first, the third, and the fifth are going to be the ones that are going to bear the brunt of this. But the people that are so behind it and voting for it are alders from other districts. That is just wrong. You should be considering how it's going to impact my district and how I'm going to be able to sell my house when my neighbor has a shack put up in the backyard that they're renting out to yahoos that you don't know who is coming and going all hours of the day and night. Thanks a lot for making it harder. Now you know why people pick up and move to blow over. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. A pleasure as always. Chief Finn, I know you're in the overflow room. I feel obligated to speak on your behalf, but I'd invite you in here if you wanted to comment. Yes, our paramedics would trudge through three feet of snow or mud. They will do whatever it takes to make sure that your medical emergency is addressed. That is the Zoom list of people who want to speak. Now the in-person, Trevor Rourke. Oh, Chief Finn, sorry. I didn't want your attendance at tonight's meeting to be for naught.
Never. I didn't, could barely hear. What was the question or comment again?
Honestly, I think it was a little rhetorical about the accessory dwelling. In the winter, are our paramedics going to have to trudge through three feet of snow if there's a medical emergency?
No, we'll get through any place, anytime, and very quick response.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Now, Trevor Rourke.
Trevor Rourke, six zero one Washington Avenue. I've seen some signs around Point, those yard signs. Talked with a few neighbors about this, and I've reviewed the ordinance draft. I've also discussed this item with my alder. Because the healthiest, most sustainable, and most fiscally responsible way to grow for municipality, our City of Stevens Point, is within the same footprint that already exists. This is a great zoning code update. Infill and upper growth instead of outward growth, which I was against the last item, increases the tax base for the city within the current limits and helps reduce the collective burden taxpayers have to pay with infrastructure costs and the cost of services. Further, this new style of auxiliary housing allows more flexibility and more options for affordable living, something we need to do better with here for all ages and all stages. And lastly, some residents may find this an option that they can hang on to in order to bring more revenue when many people are still struggling to find a job or even keep a job with a livable wage. I hope this zoning code update gets approved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dave Medine.
Again, it's Dave Medine. I was a community development director from nineteen seventy-six to nineteen eighty-four. At that time, the housing stock had deteriorated and neighborhoods had declined with families moving to the adjacent townships of Hall, Plover, Stockton, and the village of Plover. There was a substantial change in the proportionality of population within the city and surrounding municipalities. Because of that deterioration, we adopted the Building Maintenance and Occupancy Code, very similar to what you have now. Some of the same standards have not changed that dramatically. And that was to encourage the maintenance of buildings and the stability of neighborhoods. Just as a little bit of an aside, as one of the major discussions when that, when we, when the city adopted that Maintenance and Occupancy Code, there was a lot of discussion about how to prevent disagreements between neighbors when one neighbor wanted to improve his building. And of course, it was a part of the discussion because at that time, we were telling people that they needed to improve their buildings. That was part of the whole impetus to try to improve some of the neighborhood housing stock. After a thorough study, the city decided to enforce a three-foot minimum lot setback provision to allow room for people to comply with the Building Maintenance Code that we had just installed without fear of criminal trespass. There was a lot of discussion on that. Three foot seemed to be the standard that would allow people to work on their buildings without having any interference from an irate neighbor. It seemed to be effective in that area, and it would be effective to this day. That's just a bit of an aside on some of the discussions that took place forty years ago. Now, to the proposed accessory dwelling and the proposed accessory commercial units. There will probably be some cases where an accessory, a proposed accessory dwelling or a proposed accessory commercial unit would be detrimental to the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare of the neighboring properties. There may be some. There may not be very many, but there may be some. There ought to be some review process so that these special uses are basically compatible with the permitted uses in the district. Just something that's basically compatible. There should be some general review of that. The proposed ordinance automatically permits accessory dwellings. It automatically permits commercial units. That ought to be changed so that these special units should be, could be conditional uses. Then in addition to meeting the basic maintenance and occupancy code that we have, the basic electrical code, the basic plumbing code, they would also have to have, to meet some additional conditional use review or standards. It would apply.
Dave, can you try and wrap it up, please?
I just want to make a proposal on an amendment.
We want to make sure everybody has a chance to talk.
This will be it. The standards for the conditional uses would then be the same as the conditional uses that are outlined in section seventeen of the zoning code. I'm suggesting that this could be accomplished by changing one word in the proposal. It's on the first page. It's item B. It would be actually designated as twenty-three oh one fourteen B, which now states ACUs and ADUs shall be a permitted use in the various residential districts. And to simply change the name, the word from permitted to conditional use. So then it would read, ACUs and ADUs shall be conditional use in the R-dash L-D, R-dash one, R-dash two, R-dash three, R-dash four, and R-dash five zoning districts. That's what I'm suggesting, that it would be very appropriate to have that. At least at this stage where we're not familiar with how, what the responses may be. We're going to have the whole gamut from the people on one side saying it's all going to be mother-in-law. On the other side, it's all going to be student rental. And we want to, I'd like, just give us a chance to see what the spectrum may be and what it falls into. And then at that point, maybe the conditional could be reviewed and maybe even eliminated. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next up, I saw people writing it down, but I'll bring it up again when the speaker's list is exhausted. Mr. Medine's suggestion. We have Michael O'Meara. And Michael, I'm going to ask that you try and be as brief as possible.
I will.
You already did speak on item number six about this very item.
I have a couple of housekeeping deals. The first one is utility connections, fourteen H. I would change the writing of it because of the way it's written. It sounds like you could get a connection to a utility from the principal building. I would rewrite it to say all utility connections for ACUs and ADUs shall be separate from any other structure on the same lot. The way it's written, it sounds like you could get it through the principal structure, and I'm sure that's not your intent.
That is absolutely not the intention, and I'll let the director speak to that one again. It's fourteen H, Director. I know we talked about that one in particular. Go ahead, Mr. O'Meara.
The other thing, aside and rear yard setbacks. We say that they'll have the same setbacks as you have for an accessory building. I don't think that that's appropriate. I think they should be a minimum of eight feet. And the reason is, if you're going to have people living in there and you have two people who are three feet apart, so you get six feet between them, there's no place for air and light between those two buildings, and you run the risk of conflagration because they're really tight together. I think you need an eight-foot side yard and backyard setback. It's more important than the front yard setback as far as I'm concerned because it really has to do with quality of life and safety from conflagration.
Thanks, sir. Thank you for being brief. Next up? Sorry, I'll make mention of that because you're not near a microphone. Mr. O'Meara was kind enough to summarize his comments, which were handed out to all of the alders. If anyone from the public wishes a summary of those comments, we have copies up here. They'll be made available through the record. Next up, Corey Keeler.
Corey Keeler, eleven eleven Minnesota Avenue. So I'm speaking in support of this. I think it's a great idea. A lot of us, like younger people, have aging parents and we're going to, we're going to need to stick them somewhere eventually. And this is a great solution to that idea. I mean, you know, we love our aging parents, but we don't really want them living with us, you know? I mean, it would be nice to have them somewhere else. My dad listens to a lot of talk radio. I'd rather not spend all day arguing politics with them. And I'd rather not have my mom hovering around me telling me I drink too much or I haven't made enough of myself. I mean, that's, that's, that's okay for the holidays, but all the time? And this provides a solution as far as I can see. Otherwise, the only other solution is, I mean, I have a shed in the backyard that I can put them in. And I don't think anybody wants that. I think we need, we need a comfortable place for our aging residents. And this is a great solution for that. And whoever brought this up and made this change, thanks for doing that. I think it was a great idea. So that's all I got.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the comedy relief. Carol Milewski. Thank you very much, and thank you for the comedy relief. Carol Milewski.
Air Council, I did speak at the planning commission meeting at the be- beginning of the month. And I'm pretty much going to say a lot of the same things, but I guess initially what I said at that meeting. That COVID has pretty much uh dominated our conversations and our interactions with people. And having talked to many people over the last two weeks when, since I have found out about this. No one, no one that I spoke to knew anything about it, which just is not a good thing for city government. I, I think on a local status, you really believe that. Government can be more transparent because the people live in your neighborhood. So I think that's imperative that more people within the city know about this. Whether they think it's a good idea or a bad idea, I think it has to, it has to be delayed at least. So that people can talk about it because as of June, things have opened up for everybody. You talk to people in the grocery stores, you talk to people in your neighborhood, they're out, you stop, you have a conversation. And obviously going to the city, talking to the director and his assistant. You know, it has been so much better because you're not speaking through a mask. Um, I think the other thing that came about because of that was that last Monday. I talked to the editor of the Metro Wire and she had not heard about it. And I think she's a person in town that people respect in the sense that she does have her ear open. And she was surprised she didn't know about it. I also contacted on Wednesday because that's as much time as I had to get to. The editor, the new editor of the Gazette, and he had not heard about it. So our, and of course, the Stevens Point Journal is off the page. It is, it's not there anymore. But um, I just went to an empty office that had printed lobby closed and the number was not taking callers. Um, so. Those two, two sources of the general news not coming from the city did not know about it last week. I think the ordinance um is really based on the premise that density is good. And I think density is good in many ways, but I think that also density is not necessarily good. I think that for our central city, which I am a a resident of, I think it already has so many challenges. Because the our houses, first of all, the houses are old. It's a, it's a lot to maintain an old building. And one of the things that may come with this is that the housing and the. The families and get more density within an area that's already dense and diverse as far as people living there. I have four rental buildings on my, my block, so there is a diversity of people living there. Just a point on the, the block of the square of the base of the building. That twenty feet is only the base of the block of the building. If you think of the bottom of garage. Um, normally they're twelve feet. This is twenty feet and that does not include the gable. So it's really more than tw- more than the twenty feet. Um, back again, and I think there's a conditional use on this that you can build your accessory building in the old part of the city. If approved by, I think, the fire department, a foot from the lot line. And I asked about that and they said, I said, how would I maintain the side of my building? And they said, well, you'd have to talk to your neighbor. Well, that, I said, what if I had a crotched neighbor? You know, I would have a real problem. So just to close this out because the buzzer is going off. I think that perhaps this would be a question that should come up for Stevens Point down the line someplace. Because some, right now, we're twenty-six thousand seven hundred and seventeen people. I don't think we're Madison. We're certainly not Ann Arbor, which does not even have owner occupied in it. I think this is something that you look at down the line. A mother-in-law house sounds great, but the mother-in-law will in fact move out of it too, and then you don't know who's moving in. So I think this takes much more consideration than, than is, is at present. More people have to look at it and talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Carol. I don't like the mother-in-law house thing. I like my mother-in-law. I think most people do generally. She can live right in our house. Um, Kathy Dugan. Oh, I see. I'm sorry. Yep, registered against but not speaking. Thank you. And Becky Crescent.
I get the impression that a lot of this is a knee-jerk reaction of panic, like. People think these are gonna pop up on every property and it's gonna turn into some village of shacks in India. I, I don't, I don't see that happening. Um, the expensive one of them, I would assume that a lot of people can't just. Oh, it's approved. Go build it tomorrow. Um, they require a lot of restrictions. They require the plumbing. They. A lot of this seems reasonable to me. Um, and I think the need is there. Um, there is a wide range of people who need access to some of this. It's not just, you know, aging parents. Who, of course, they need it and a lot of times they can't stay in the regular house if it's not accessible because it has stairs and what have you. But it's, it's grandmas who prefer to live on site to take care of their kids, but they need a little space, a little quiet. You know, and they wanna live over there. It's disabled adults. If you look it up, the CDC says one in three adults in the US has some kind of either intellectual or physical disability. Um, I would think that most people in their extended family have somebody, you know, autism, Down syndrome, some adult that's. You know, may not be able to completely live on their own, but a situation like this, they may benefit from. Um, or if it's a physical dis- disability, this allows you to build something where all the doorways are wheelchair accessible and so is the bathroom. Um, and then, you know, as far as businesses, trying to rent business space when you're starting up something. And the expense is sky high right now for the square footage. So if you just need to do something where you have your little circuit machine or embroidery. Um, you know, you fix laptops for people where you don't really have a customer base going in and out, you know, you don't need a storefront. This gives you the opportunity to have that business without paying thousands of dollars a month for a rental. Like, I think, I think this is a re- reasonable thing to put in place. And it would benefit a lot of people in this community to have the ability to build things like this.
Thank you very much. And with that, our speaker list is exhausted. And it could be the fact that we haven't met in eighteen months in person, but this has been some of the most colorful testimony that I've ever remembered. Director, I know there's a few things you want to address. Um, please take the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so a, a few things. Uh, the idea that someone's backyard shack could be utilized as an accessory dwelling unit, I think is a gross overstatement. Uh, when you uh have a, 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 a building that is going to be housed for residential uses. Uh, there is the universal dwelling code that has to be met. There is the plumbing code, the electrical code. Uh, that need to be met as well, and that's all outlined uh within our, within our existing codes as. Mr. Madine would recall uh from the late seventies, I think when most of that was adopted. Uh, we still utilize a lot of that. We actually just rewrote the plumbing code uh to bring it up to current standards and the building code bring up to current standards. It also needs to meet the zoning code. So uh, if you have a detached garage that you want to convert and do an accessory dwelling unit. Uh, if it's right on the property line, uh, city staff would say no, it has to meet the minimum setback requirements. Because the use of the building is changing. It's going from a storage unit or garage, detached garage to a, to a residential use. And that would have to meet the minimum requirements of the zoning code as well. So again, as I mentioned earlier, there are a fair number of safeguards within the proposed uh amendment that would address a lot of the concerns. I don't want to get into the uh the- theory of uh land use and land use regulation. Uh, but we do have a three-foot setback minimum for all accessory structures within the city. Provided that you're ten feet from uh another structure. Part of that is for fire purpose. It's, it's to align with, with fire code and, and the UDC as well. So whether or not you live on a five thousand square foot lot within the community or an acre and a half within the community. You're still allowed to develop your, your accessory structure, uh whether it's a detached garage uh or a shed or uh an accessory dwelling unit. Three feet off of a- all property lines, provided that you're not in front of the principal uh structure uh on the street side. And I could, I mean, this is, I think, pro- reason people really don't like zoning is because it gets really convoluted and really complicated. And there's probably only two, maybe three people, Mr. Madine, in this room who really have a true understanding of our one hundred and forty-two page zoning code. Um, so we do, we do work with folks that come in. No one gets a building permit without meeting with Adam or I uh to go over the proposal. Uh, so those are the two major things. Um, let's see, I made a couple other notes here. Um, I think there was a brief comment regarding the tourist rooming house. Uh, we have gone. I, I think through gauntlet multiple times on the tourist rooming house component of this. If the owner is living on site, the tourist rooming house is a permitted use in all zoning districts. If the owner is not living on sites, it is not permitted in anything below R three, so R LD, R one, R two, and R three. It's not permitted. Uh, but it is a conditional use in the R four, excuse me, in R five zoning districts. So again, we, we've done a lot up to this point to protect the interests of the neighborhood, to work through this process, to ensure that there are enough safeguards. Uh, so that folks are able to, to better utilize their property while protecting the public interest. Um, staff's not opposed to tabling it and sending it back uh for more uh information or to go on and get some more public feedback. Uh, but we're also fairly confident that what we've presented to you and what the planning commissions reviewed multiple times is consistent with the direction that the city is generally going, which is. Uh, what's better known as gentle density uh within our inner core and within the community as a whole. So. Uh, have to answer any other questions, but those are my additional two cents.
Director, could you provide your thoughts on Supervisor Madine's um thought in regards to. Rather than permitted use, making it a conditional use to start out?
Yeah, I, staff's not opposed to the conditional use component of it. Um, one of the reasons that we had shifted. Uh, the traditional neighborhood overlay requirements from conditionally to permitted use was. We would get folks that would come in, they wanted to add on to their home porch or something of that nature. And they realized that they had to go through a conditionally permanent process. And not everybody has the same excitement to stand up in front of a group of people to say, hey, this is what I want to do with my property. Uh, and all my neighbors are here and they're either upset or in favor of it. Uh, and so in order to streamline it, we made those permitted. Uh, the same general concept here. We don't want to dissuade people from investing in their properties by uh constructing ADUs or ACUs. Uh, and there might be folks that, that come to City Hall and meet with Adam and I and say, this is something we want to do. And we'll have to say to them, you know, to go through the conditional use permit. It's a three hundred dollar non-refundable fee. Uh, you have to submit everything at least a month in advance. We need to have all this information before we can even get you on the agenda. Dissuades people from, from making that investment and they ask, well, if it doesn't go through, do I get my money back? The answer's no. Uh, again, non-refundable. So um, we're not opposed to it. I, I think we're trying to streamline and cut red tape. Uh, permitted's okay um as well. So uh, again, there's enough safeguards within the proposed amendment that. Uh, there shouldn't be any major detriments to the neighborhoods and I'm, I'm very confident in saying that, so.
Thank you, Director. Can we have a motion to approve?
This, this is Alder Slawinski.
Yes, sir.
Can I, can I ask to get the director back up there?
Absolutely.
So, uh. Um, under uh, it looks like item G. Section one, where it's uh basically owner occupied. Could he provide a definition of primary or principal res- or primary residence, sorry?
Yeah, uh, thanks for calling me back up because Mr. O'Meara's uh fourteen H uh recommendation, the utility connection. I, I think that's actually appropriate. I, I think that that would be a good amendment to have. Uh, and I think his uh proposal verbatim would work uh sufficiently well. So. Uh, as it relates to the owner occupied, uh, the, the principal residential use would be the primary residence. Uh, so typically it would be the larger home on the lot. Uh, the law, the, the property or the home that was there first is typically considered the, the principal use. So in this proposal. Uh, the owner would have to reside in that, in that uh, uh principal structure uh and not the accessory structure. I know we've talked a little bit about whether or not, you know, um, Melissa, if I rented from Melissa, she could rent the ADU. And I could rent her primary residence under the proposal currently, that would not be allowed.
So my, my, I guess my question is.
Primary residence. Uh, so I, I think what Alder Slawinski, correct me if I'm wrong, sir, he, he's looking at a definition of primary residence. Meaning I have a home in Florida.
Exactly.
Uh, and, and one up here, which one counts as my primary residence? And that I think is a pretty easily defined term.
Uh, typically what we utilize is your voting address as your primary residence.
Uh, and that's what we use?
Historically, that's for consistency. That's what the zoning code is utilized, at least during my tenure with the city. If there's questions about whether or not you live in the primary residence, it's where you vote from. So if we vote from Florida or Arizona, you are not, that's not your primary residence. And arguably, you could not construct a accessory dwelling unit uh as a result.
That, that's just a little bit different than what I had remembered with, yes, having to live there a majority of the year.
Yeah, I mean, it goes back to regulation and that's part of the challenge.
Alder?
Well, cuz uh, that's my exact point. Uh, I, I know someone that has a, their primary residence in, within the city of Stevens Point. But they lived the majority of their time in Florida. So now you could potentially have, you know, a primary principal resident. They're not even occupying the, the property and, you know, you have this uh accessory building or accessory dwelling. Um, you know, kind of, you know, we're defeating our whole reasoning on why we want to make sure that this is uh the owner, it's owner occupied.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other comments? Uh, we'll go with uh Alder Keemer.
Thank you.
We'll work our way around.
I heard a lot of confusion from District Three residents on the scope and limitations of the ACU, ADU amendment. And I've also heard a lot of frustration over the lack of outreach and education to the public regarding this proposed change. And I think partially um also in language and format that the public can readily understand. So I propose to delay voting on this amendment to allow for more time for public education. I think the amendment has a lot of merits and a lot of potential to do good, and in general, I'm in favor of it. But I think the lack of understanding on what is being brought forward should be addressed and clarified first.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else on this side? Alder Jennings?
Yeah, I started out, I was um, I guess cautiously supportive of this when it first came forward. I think it was inspired by the tiny home movement. Um, it's also a way of trying to cut, deal with. For, for affordable housing. And what we were, what we saw were mother-in-law suites. And I really like the idea of people being able to have a business on site, so it offered that kind of flexibility. But the mother-in-law suite, it's uh, that's all very, that's all very quaint. Um. As was mentioned uh earlier, District One is going to be, could be disproportionately impacted by this in a negative. Way. Um, so I'm concerned about that and the more time I have thought about this and looked at my property. And, and thought about what would it be like if my neighbor built an accessory unit when I already have. I'll try not to curse, a boarding house next to me that I'm watching fall apart and looking at their trash. The guy lives in California and I'm watching my property value go down and down and down, and I cannot do anything about it. And what can I do about somebody building one of these units in their backyard and renting it to another student? So my frustration level, I think, um, is echoed by previous older neighbor. We are in this core area and we're impacted in ways that none of the other districts are. And we can't do anything about it and we can't get enforcement. So I think um because of that, because people were unaware. And I, and I just want to um say that Tom Schrader, our former Parks Director, who had thirty-some odd years with the city. I, I distinctly remember him saying very soon after he retired, he said something like, man, I now understand why people always say they don't know what's going on. So it's really easy when we're inside government and we know what's going on to say, well, it went through, you know, all these different meetings. And it went through plan and we had a public hearing. You should know about it. I also know the other side that it's really difficult. I also know the other side that it's really difficult to follow city business, particularly during a pandemic. So I'm very concerned about unintended consequences and the particular impact this will have on District One and District Three. I also um to the recommendation of conditional use, that sounds like at least one positive move, but thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from this side? Yes, go ahead, Alder Short.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I have, I'm supportive of this. Um. I think that the discussion has clarified what this is about. Um, and I think maybe clear today than it was, say, a week ago even. Um, this is about giving property owners options. Um, as we've said, it's the uh family member. Other in-law suite uh that's not in the house, um which a constituent approached me about two years ago. Um, it's the uh home office that's not exactly in the home. Um, and it is uh rental income for those who need it, what it is not. Density is important to us, um but this isn't density. Um, this uh is um going to only happen in places where people uh want it, need it and can do it. Um, I'm not looking to this to uh be a major source of revenue. Um, and uh this distinction between uh the option for homeowners versus uh for developers, um rental property investors uh and landlords is an important one. Um, I am reassured by um most all the things that, that have been presented here. Um, uh, I think that uh as, as we've seen, we, we now better understand how much of the uh zoning code will already apply. Um, and uh I having in, in the last five days had direct exchanges with um count of twenty-one um individuals, uh sixteen of whom were constituents. Um. And it was, it, um, opinion has been divided. Um, but I couldn't help noticing the same thing demographically in the interchanges that I've had as I'm noticing tonight, which is that younger people favor this. And if we want to know, and I have been supportive of this from, from beginning. Um, so what's driving this? What's the agenda? Um, it's because, I don't know, um. These are all people who are younger than me. Um, but if I was, you know, looking to make this city the way uh for me, um then I don't think I'm serving the city very well. Um, because the future, it's gonna absolutely be essential that this is a city that younger people want to live. Um. In um, in all those exchanges and after twenty-one conversations, I do need a little more time. And, and one of those exchanges was exceptional. The person is, it happens to be in the room and I'll, I'll talk about that. Um, but um. Well, uh, so I'll, I'll go straight to that. Um, this was the best conversation I've ever had and um with somebody of the opposing view, because not only did we agree to disagree. Um, we talked it through uh to such an extent that we, I think, got some clarity about what we disagree about. And it's that we have different expectations about what the uh impact will be. Um. I expect that uh this will benefit the people who are looking for these options as intended. Um, and it will do that way more than it will um have the effect that opponents expect, which is that uh the co- you know, some combination of the added people. Um, and the added structure will um crowd in on, on their, uh, on the neighbors. Uh, and uh potentially the neighborhood. Um. This issue has gotten, uh, it's complicated and we've, you know, had a lot of interchange, so if I actually may have another moment, please. Getting my turn of thought back. The piece about the owner being on site is essential. It has everything to do with the attention, as I just explained. So I am reassured, uh, I, I think that a um a permitted use should be fine. Um, uh, I, of course, I understand that it's uh difficult for people to follow everything. Um, it's also difficult for us to know exactly what will be uh, um, you know, the most sensitive topics. Um. But since uh we just had the discussion about what uh in uh resident means. Um, I do have to say that uh for me, it does mean more than um, this is where you are in November or in April. Um, and so um, I, I, I'm looking for the definition that really is going to be in the same spirit as they're there, right? That they're not um snowbirds for four or five more months a year. Um, that their being there is essential to this. And so uh if that's something that um, you know, otherwise that would be something important enough to be to uh
Thank you. Go to this side now. Alder Zerizua. We'll get to Zoom people in a second.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, there's so many parts to this. I mean, I know a lot of decisions are complicated, but um, when we're looking at like, who does this affect negatively? Yes. If someone is building by your home and it's a landlord and you now have a rental next to you, I understand that that is difficult, but we also have a city that the demographics are changing. We have more um people of other races and people that culturally they want to be together. So we're having more multicultural families and this does allow for that. Um, you know, them still being on the same property, but having a little more space. Cory's mom, I'm sorry that she'll have to live where he puts her, but I tell my mom she's getting my unfinished basement, but this would maybe be a better option. Um, I think too in talking about people with disabilities, it's, it's definitely um a need in our community of where um people's adult children with disabilities are going to live. That's ongoing conversation. Um, and we're talking about, you know, how can we do that safely and yet not have people congregating? Because we've gone away from institutional settings. So if parents have an option of having their child still live close to them but have independence, um, that, that's ideal. Um. I think those are all the comments I had for that.
Thank you. Maybe instead of mother-in-law suite, can we, can we like call it a Monday house or something? Everybody hates Mondays, right? Just sounds a little derogatory. President Johnson, I, I'm going to assume that you have something to say.
I do. I'm a mother-in-law as well.
Oh, everybody, everybody. That wasn't, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I, I.
Didn't mean to direct that. It just sounds like everybody wants to speak.
Everybody wants to, to pipe in. But yeah, as a mother-in-law myself, I guess I'd like to say we're not all bad and we shouldn't be put in shits. So, um, and I know that um this is gonna surprise Ms. Cresson, but I agree with her a hundred percent on her comments. That um, this is, this is a good idea. Does it need more work? I think it probably does. Um, I think it creates a lot of opportunity. I am good friends with a woman who started a group called Door to Dreams and it is about um families with adult children with developmental and intellectual ca- disabilities and they're trying to find housing options in this community so that their chil- adult children can lead independent lives. I think this is an option that might provide that. Um, however, uh again, I think we've seen a couple of things, great input from Mr. Omera, great suggestions from Mr. Medina, who I always respect, or both individuals I always respect. Um. You know, a little bit later on, we're gonna be talking about a housing task force and this is housing related and it seems like this should be kind of, it's a tool in that toolbox of looking for solutions for housing. Um, and in, as we think about that more comprehensively, instead of doing it a little bit here and a little bit here and a little bit here. What's the comprehensive systematic approach to addressing housing needs in our community? For, for everyone, for mother-in-laws, you know, for folks with disabilities. Or a family that buys a home and has a little bit extra space and wants to um provide an extra income into their, into their household. Housing affordability, housing quality, housing accessibility. Um, all of these things fall under what we hope to talk about in the housing task force. So while I support this strongly, I, I think we do have an opportunity to make it even better and kind of tease out the law of unintended consequences. We'll never get it perfect because there is no perfect, but I think it can be just a little bit better. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Dalton?
Um, I just wanted to say that I appreciate um Director Krasny's uh thoughts on the conditional versus permitted and, and I agree with him in that the process to go through planning one of these, putting together information, the plans, let alone the financial investment is onerous enough for a person who is interested in moving forward with this. And I think working with our city staff will be an adequate um safeguard for that. Some of the concerns that I've brought for that a rental property that's not owner occupied might just plop one of these down is the, is the very thing that's already protected in this too. And so I think some of the wor- worst case scenarios that we can jump to have been adequately um safeguarded. And I think that the diversification of housing stock that this allows for is very important and a different scaling of investment. Rather than adding on an entire duplex unit, this might, this allows for just something different. Um, nine out of the ten people that I know that just uh are looking for houses or recently purchased houses would have wanted to purchase a house that has an ADU. So the question of who are the people buying houses? Anecdotally, ten of the people that are around my age that want to did, and seven of them already bought a house. So you know, I think that this is, as we're saying, something that in the future people are looking for because it's a diversification of income as well, that I think is important for people my generation.
Thank you. Alder Fischler? Don't feel, don't feel obligated. I'm just going right down the line because it seems like everybody has something to say.
That's okay. I do actually support this as well because um, as Director Krasny stated, he had done something like the similar in Appleton and it was quite a success. So I, I think that just based on that alone, um, he's had a lot of background on this whole topic and also experience. So I think that should be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alder Morrow.
I agree with all their uh Keemers comments all the way over there. Um, and I, and I don't think there's any rush. Um, sometimes it does take miss, it miss information to get the actual facts out and to get folks involved. Uh, if someone hears that they get that folks could go to Menards and end up getting a shack and start to rent it out, I mean, that would make a lot of people upset. Um, so.
Shop local.
Shop local. I, I want to thank Ryan as well for confirming the facts and being able to get everything out to us. But, but again, because of the, because the myths, because the misinformation was out there. A lot more folks are involved and I think more folks are actually paying attention as well. So so, so again, I don't think there's really any rush. Um, my own thoughts are I have an ADU in essence on Maya block and it was that, it was an actual selling point for, for the house. The folks who lived there prior, they had their parents live there to help them out. And then when they left, a new professional couple came, came in and their parents take care of their kids. And that was the biggest, and, and it's a very nice unit as it's a water, sewer, power, everything to it. And that was a selling point for that, for uh that um house. And I think there are, and I would have never thought of it, but I'm older. So.
I hear you.
Um, I, one of the other concerns that I heard is an AC for a commercial u- unit. When people think of that, I mean, that oh, puts up a whole wide litany of things. I mean, could someone put a welding shop in there? Someone put a and someone put a Kim Lab in there. I mean, so there's a lot of things that just that word alone creates a lot of concern. Someone wants to, someone wants to put that up in their house. And I think that Ryan has a lot of these things done. Um, but again, trying to get those, trying to get those facts out. And as I said, I agree that maybe um we, we should wait and give folks more, more of a time to be able to actually see what's going on and be, and also end up being aware because sometimes it does take something like this to get folks involved. Um, because most folks don't come to our meetings and oftentimes there's nobody here. So it's nice that we have folks involved and it's nice to see Ms. Romero again after all these years. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Morrow. We will now go to our two Alders attending remotely. Alder Nibon will give you the floor first if you choose.
Thank you. Um, I'm not a mother-in-law, but I could use a suite. And a- as a uh unreformed urban planner, I think land use and zoning are very sexy things. Um, I think this is a great idea. I could see um, I, I have a lot of friends that are music teachers and I could see a music teacher building a little tiny soundproof studio in their, in their yard to teach their students and not have to pay outrageous amounts of rent somewhere. Um. My next door neighbor is aging. Her son wants to downsize his house. They could put a little suite in the backyard for her and he could move into her house. Everybody's happy. Um. And I think the, the cost involved to construct one of these things, especially now, is only the people that really want this are gonna do this. I'm not at all opposed to putting this off a month or so. I think some of the issues that Alder Jennings raised about a couple of districts in the downtown area, perhaps some of those could be um ruled out because they just might not be appropriate. That's something that staff could look at. Um. So I think I'm supportive, but I, I would like to wait, you know, let's do another month. We don't need to do it fast. We just need to do it right. Thank you.
Thank you. And Alder Slawinski, if you choose to have some comments.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Um, I guess I'm gonna uh just kind of echo uh the other Alders regarding the um hesitation. I also have some, have some concerns. Um. You know, we're hearing a lot of testimony that this is gonna be for grandma and grandpa, you know, parents living on site, which I mean, I think that's a great idea. My concern is, is those that are gonna be chasing that mighty dollar. And they're gonna, you know, try to get as much as they can out of their property and, you know, build one of these and, and it's gonna turn into, you know, issues. Um, you know, the, the, the phrase came up tonight, neighborhood stability. You know, this is gonna be allowed in uh our dash uh low, low density to our five districts. Uh, again, I, I just really concerned on what this potentially could happen. You know, uh, you know, and, and throw a, a wrench in the stability of these neighborhoods. Um. You know, we, we've all sat in these meetings month over month, year over year about parking issues that we're, you know, we're hearing and especially in the, in the core of our city, you know, District One, District Three. I'm really concerned that this is gonna add to that. I know uh Nancy Ropie had, had testimony earlier and she brought that up and I agree with her. Um. Uh, the occupancy issues, you know, we've had, I've heard them when Alder Nebel was on the council. You know, that was something that she, I heard a lot from her that, you know, supposed to only be, you know, four people in, in this building, but they have six. You know, again, I don't see that, uh, you know. I guess it really can't be addressed on the ordinance, but I mean, you know, again, now we're adding more um inspection and, and, you know, I guess site visits, if you will. Um. Again, I, I, I'm gonna follow the, the Alders that probably that this ordinance is gonna affect the most. And uh not support it tonight until we get this a little more cleaned up. Uh, again, it'd be great if we could just put it as, you know, uh, the mother-in-law suite or, or whatever. I'm just, my fear is that this is gonna, you know, there's gonna be people out there that are gonna take advantage of this and it's really gonna affect that neighborhood stability. So uh just my, my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alder Slawinski. Uh, the motion before you is to approve uh the zoning change uh as presented. If you're in favor, you'll vote yes. If you're opposed, you'll vote no and the clerk will call a roll.
Jennings?
No.
Shore?
No.
Keemer?
No.
Zerizua? Johnson?
No.
Slawinski?
No.
Nibon?
No.
Dalton?
Aye.
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Morrow?
No.
I think we have a seven-three, was that correct? Seven-three, the motion fails. Uh now, we have some options. It sounds like there was a consensus, or at least a majority consensus, to postpone this and bring it back. By taking no action, we have the ability to bring it back. You may also postpone to a a a period of time that you define. You may also direct staff to make any changes, or uh in this case, I know Director Krasinski and I talked about it today. Having some additional public hearings. I think Alder Shore was the one that researched it and found we've been talking about it for eighteen months. But it's out there now, so maybe we, maybe now having some additional public hearings. You can direct staff to do that. Uh we would likely do that anyway. Uh but the, again, the the, whatever you wanna do. Um again. If you take no action, staff will bring it back at a certain time, and we will very likely have those additional public meetings. If you wanna mandate that through your action, you could certainly do that, too. What are your wishes, Alder Shore?
Uh thank you, Mayor. So um I think probably most of the concerns have been laid out. Um and that um it'd probably be complicated to try to give a specific mandate. I would hope that because it has gotten, been brought as far as it has, that it would come back next month. Um but I don't know if we need to say that. So the only question for me is. Uh you know, I definitely wanna continue. Um it has been helpful, you know, I uh. In the end, the yard signs probably did do us a favor, even though I didn't feel that way when I first saw them. Um and, but I don't know whether um we need to like um. Add a meeting that pushes this back. Um so I would like to see it next month.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, are you done?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. President Johnson?
I I think uh it's important probably to make a motion um to to ask staff. To continue their work on it, to bring it back. I don't wanna lose it just because we've sort of acquiesced on this. I think it's, because I support this, I don't wanna lose the opportunity. So my motion is, is that we ask staff to continue work on this. Um also to do, you know, public outreach where necessary and bring it back, not necessarily in a timeframe, but at when it's, when it's, when it's right.
When they think it's appropriate.
That is correct. So that's my motion.
Great. Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
We uh we'll, we'll give it to Alder Person Keemer. Any discussion there?
Yes, um when would it be, um would we have to put in when we would have to, when we would request to have another service meeting or a?
You could. I don't think that's necessary. I think that staff generally understands uh a lot of the comments and concerns that were brought up. We will take some time and address those concerns. There were some written comments, email comments that were submitted. Uh and when staff feels that they've addressed those to the best of their ability, we'll bring it back. Which then affords everyone else the opportunity to make further amendments. Director, it looks like you want something, I wanna say something.
Well, uh I think this is a really great opportunity to have some Alder district meetings. Uh so you folks can be a part of these discussions. Um I really think that this is an important piece of affordable housing. Uh and I I think what staff has brought you is what we feel is really comfortable doing. And so now that we're going back, we're gonna be including you as part of those, and uh hopefully we'll see you all in the next few weeks at uh district meetings, so.
Great.
Thank you.
And we will be ever cognizant of walking quarums. Uh we certainly don't wanna violate any open meetings. But we, the intention, as Director Krasinski mentioned, we talked about it, is having a a district meeting, giving everyone an opportunity to to get the word out in their district. And get some feedback on this. So the motion before you is to direct staff to continue working on this and bring it back when they deem appropriate. Does that paraphrase it pretty well, President Johnson?
That does, thank you.
Thank you. If you are in favor of that motion, you will vote yes. If you are opposed, vote no, and Clerk Yentor will call the roll.
Morrow?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Felton?
Aye.
Nibone?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Zerazua?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
Uh ten zero, right? Ten zero, that is adopted. Um item number ten is a resolution. I know the fire chief has been waiting patiently. Uh request from the city of Stevens Point for assigned variance to construct a freestanding sign exceeding the minimum height and size restrictions at thirty-one. Hundred Whiting Avenue with parcel identified in your packet, consistent with chapter twenty-three, I'm sorry, twenty-five point fourteen. As you probably recall, Alder Persons, this is going to be for the new fire training facility, and it looks like Director Krasinski has something to say as well. We'll let Director Krasinski go first.
This is a zoning thing, so. Plan commission reviewed the request. Uh did recommend approval with conditions outlined within the document. Staff would recommend approval as well.
Thank you. Chief Ben, anything to add? Thank you very much. Um Alder Persons, I need a motion. Alder uh Fishler?
Alder Fishler, it's in my district, so I would like to move for approval on the resolution to request, I'm sorry, for the point variance.
Thank you.
I second.
Seconded by Morrow. Discussion? Really? We spent hour and a half on the last one. All right, uh all those in, I'm sorry, clerk, please call the roll.
Shore?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Zerazua?
Aye.
Johnson?
Oh, I'm sorry. Just looking at the the document and zoned right out. Aye.
Aye.
Nibone?
Aye.
Felton?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
Uh unanimous consent, that is proved. Yes, it's been a long night so far. And number eleven is discussion of possible action on residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan. For the community development block grant application for the Grove Apartments at thirteen hundred Maria Drive. Also known as the convent property director Krasinski.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh so before you tonight is a residential anti-displacement relocation assistance plan for the Grove Apartments. Typically through community development block grant programming, uh especially as it relates to special projects, uh which is the grant that we're pursuing. Uh with the developer, General Capital out of Fox Point, Wisconsin, uh to repurpose the convent into affordable senior uh housing. Then have three additional townhomes as affordable family housing. Uh we do have to include this as part of our grant application. It should be noted that there are zero displacements as a result of the development. Uh and so consistent where we've done in the past, uh we've identified two anti-displacement and relocation assistant plan. Uh projects essentially coordinating conforcinat three haven housing assistance programs. We have a number of programs that are well, well-used within the community, although they could be utilized more. So a little pitch for those who are interested in uh pursuing like rental rehabs, uh the neighbor helping neighbor program as well. And the second one would be, we're feasible to give priority to rehab of housing as opposed to demolition to avoid displacement. And I believe that's consistent with the first request as well. So uh again, very clear here, we are not displacing any folks. That uh are at the convent. The convent is vacant, and that is a voluntary decision made by the sisters, so.
Thank you, Director. Need a motion? President Johnson?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve is there a second? Seconded by Jennings. Discussion?
I have a question. If there's no one's being displaced, what are we gonna be using it for?
They're gonna be turning it into apartments?
Yeah, yes, but like the grant to re.
Yeah, so federal grants have very specific requirements, and so it's just.
Yep.
Although we're not displacing anyone, it has to be part of the grant application, saying that if you do, uh this is the the plan of attack, so.
That's right.
Sorry, I didn't catch it, but yes, we're good shape. Any other comments? Hearing none, uh clerk, please call the roll.
Morrow?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Felton?
Aye.
Nibone?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Zerazua?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Aye.
And that is approved. And number third, I'm sorry, twelve is an ordinance amendment. Uh regarding chapter nine point zero five as it relates to parking, uh page sixty-seven of your packets. Alder Persons, I need a motion. Motion by Dalton?
Like a motion to approve the ordinance?
Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by Zerazua. Discussion? Hearing and seeing none, clerk, please call that roll.
Jennings?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Zerazua?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Nibone?
Aye.
Felton?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
And that is approved. Director Brune walked all the way over here from the overflow room, and nobody had questions for him. All right, uh item number thirteen is to approve and place on file the twenty-twenty C Mar for the wastewater department. Uh that was included in your packet. That's just our compliance and maintenance annual report. Need a motion? Motion, I'm sorry, President Johnson?
Motion to approve. I do find these things fascinating.
Thank you. Keemer second. Excuse me. Uh discussion there.
I'm glad that um all, that Ald- Alder Johnson likes sewage sewage.
Well, and city planning is sexy, so we're, we're all good here. Um one more time, the motion is to approve. Uh clerk, please call that roll.
Morrow?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Felton?
Aye.
Nibone?
The best tour I got when I was a new alder was the wastewater treatment facility over there with Director Lemke. It's amazing. Aye.
Jeremy?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Zerazua?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
Thank you, and that is approved. And number fourteen is an ordinance amendment, chapter thirteen point twenty-three sub-two. Cross connections being prohibited. Uh need a motion? Zerazua moves? Was that a second, President Johnson?
Yes.
Seconded by President Johnson. Uh discussion? Hearing and seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Jennings?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Keemer?
Aye.
Zerazua?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Nibone?
Aye.
Felton?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
And that is approved. And number fifteen is creation of a housing task force. Uh we talked about this at committee, page ninety-seven of your packets. Thank you. Do we have a second? Seconded by Zerazua. Discussion? Hearing and seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Morrow?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Felton?
Aye.
Nibone?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Zerazua?
Aye.
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
And by unanimous consent, that is approved. The agenda is exhausted, and we are adjourned at nine twenty-two.